I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. We have a quorum. All items to be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by law. I extend a warm welcome to those of you that are present and to anyone who happens to be watching on TV. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. At this time, the board is going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with its attorney. But if there is anyone who wishes to make public comment now and you're here, we would be happy to hear those. Otherwise, as usual, the board will return and tonight we will work very hard to get back out here at 7:00. And I know we'll have a lot of guests because we have a lot of special recognition. So we will be back out at 7:00 and then if anyone happens to fill out a request for public comment, then we can take those up at that time as well. Okay? Thank you. All right. The board will reconvene in open session. We have been in closed session where no action was taken as required by the Texas Open Meetings Act. And at this time, I'd ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence while we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting for the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of November, we have Mr. Peyton Carpenter and Reagan Cassandra Maldonado from Lake Eyre Montessori Magnet. We'd like to recognize their parents who are here with them tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I think that we'll have them, they'll be recognized in a moment. So next on our agenda is public comment. When we convened the meeting tonight at 6:00, right before we went into our closed session, we also had an opportunity for public comment. And we had one person who was interested, but I think, is she, are you still here? Yes? Do you still wish to address the board? Please. Yep. Yes, thank you. When we got the sheet of paper, it had your children on it. So I wanted to make sure that, yeah, okay. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Phyllis Stone. I have a child that goes to Waco High School. And what she's dealing with is a lot of ADHD and dyslexia and behavior problems and stuff. And lately, she's not been getting, let's see, the police have been more handling her in a behavior specialist. They're telling me at school there's not none there. It's like maybe two, Mr. Davis and Mr. Sharp, that they can't handle all the kids. And so the problem that she's been having is with principals and stuff, and they're not understanding what's wrong, actually wrong with her. And they're, the way they're coming at her, they're addressing her in an anger way and it's enticing her to blur up. And so now we got officers coming to drag her, trying to make her calm down, and they can't calm her down because they're treating her in a physical way or a body language way that it doesn't help. You understand what I'm saying? So like, Mr. Sharp, when he came, he calmed her down, but he, it was already too far. They say she got, she went too far with her mouth verbally. If he was there before or had a chance to get there to be around, it would've helped. She got into an altercation on the basketball team, and they took her back and they kicked her out of school. So now they put her in DAP, and I'm feeling that she shouldn't be there. She should've had the chance to sit down and talk with another behavior specialist to try to see what route can we get her to be on besides always trying to send, because it's been a verbally threat from day one about my child and her actions that goes on with her behavior. It's been a threat to send her to that school. So once she did one big thing, they sent her there instead of trying to find a plan to help keep her here at the school. Well, that made me have to withdraw her out of Waco ISD to try to better her education if we can't get her at Waco High. Because there's no one there to help, to help deal with her physically at all. They're all judging her off of when she's mad and upset, when she really just walking around to calm down of what's the altercation going on. But they're judging her from a negative perspective, not a positive way. But she's a good kid. You look at the background, everything comes out as a good kid, it's just we might have that time where, but that's part of her disability. I've been researching and looking up on it, and in black and white, it says clearly what my child, everything that she's doing, it says right there in black and white. So it made me feel bad as a mom just two days ago because I wasn't clearly understanding that my child is fighting for herself to be at this school, deal with a lot of people, and keep trying to go forward in life instead of sitting back letting everybody try to tell her, oh, you have a very bad mental illness and they're judging it from her, you know? I mean, because that's what it based down to, she have a mental illness, but she don't want the whole world to know because we have security and stuff in schools that talk to other kids or talk to other teachers. And everybody sit around and act like their child don't hurt, but them are the smartest ones that hurt everything, get read body language to know if you're being negative to them or being positive to them. So it, what I mean, what I'm, I mean, I'm saying a lot, but what I'm saying is we need more people to pay attention to our kids instead of trying to lock them up, shack them, send them on to another bad school just because they don't have a disagreement with a principal or they were too loud. You know, it's not nobody there to, that really know how to judge a kid. That's what behavior specialists are very important. They're there, they know how to understand kids, they're there to help them when they need it. We don't have that. And I'm seeing it with my own eyes. I've been at Waco High, my child is a senior year, and I've been there most half, every day, keep going up there for the same thing of just a principal trying to prove his feelings and ego to satisfy what's going on. And that's not how it works. I just feel like she never got the opportunity to get what she need, like, you know? She didn't get the opportunity because we had this one principal that was just steady judging. Even, he couldn't, you couldn't even let the behavior specialist ask her to sit around and make a plan.
Did you, did you have an opportunity to visit with Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? All right. Special recognitions.
Thank you. We are going to recognize tonight our Future Educators Academy Pilot Project participants. In March of 2021, Waco ISD was awarded a Pathways and Technology Early College High School PTEC Planning Grant Award in the amount of $111,587. PTEC students earn a high school diploma, an industry-recognized certification, and an association degree, associate degree upon completion of the program. In August of 2021, Waco ISD was awarded a T-class grant award of $238,000 to support and expand the PTEC program that is allowing the district to launch an academy focused on education and training named the Future Educators Academy. During this meeting, Christine Holochek, who is the dean of the academy, will provide a detailed overview of the PTEC model for the Future Educators Academy. And right now, we'd like to ask our participants to stand and be recognized as being part of the pilot program that launched this fall. So please stand when your name is called. Faith Stanley, Jerkendalen Carr, Lexi Moreno, Anthony Lopez, Aleah Matthews, Marina Elena Solazaro, Zamora Solis, Haley Mullen, Crystal Ritchie.
I hate to interrupt you, but do you mind asking them to come up to the front so the camera can see them and we can see, because we have these big posts in front of us.
Sure. Can you come up to the front, please? If your name's been called, and I will continue.
Please join us up front. We're really proud of you guys and we want to have the opportunity to recognize you and so the cameras can see you. Yeah. Great.
Haley Mullen, Crystal Ritchie, Brandon Picazo, Kiana Tally, Smara Fabella, Angela Cibrian, Vanessa Enriquez, Adam Sais, Evelyn Montelongo, Osmar Casares-Guian, Araceli Chavez, Jaclyn Perez, Even, you say that, William Eli Ruby, and Jasmine Long.
Yay. Thank you all for coming up front. Thank you. Okay. It won't be long and y'all will be back here as teachers, right? Everybody?
Yay.
We have a presentation on the PTEC Academy later on the agenda, but we want you to meet these students. We hope they'll be future teachers for Waco ISD. And so, thank you, students, for being here this evening.
Hope you'll stay.
Stick around and listen. All right. You sit down.
Next, we're going to recognize the TEA newcomers community of practice. Grace Benson, Waco ISD's Director of ESL and Bilingual Education, has been selected by the Texas Education Academy to be part of the newcomer community of practice. Members of the group represent districts across Texas and will be working together to improve the learning outcomes of immigrant students across the state. As a first-generation immigrant herself, Ms. Benson says, "It is such a great honor for me to help our districts learn from the practices that are helping newcomer students at Waco ISD and to help immigrant students from all over Texas." For the first meeting of the community of practice, Waco ISD was asked to provide student speakers to respond to questions about how teachers have helped them succeed. During the meeting, TEA showed videos where newcomers shared practices that are helping them learn and feel welcome at Waco ISD. A resounding message that came across from the students was a sense of family that they feel in Waco ISD. As part of the We Are Waco ISD video series, the Communications Department recently produced a video providing a more detailed look at the difference that district newcomers program is making for students, and that video can be viewed on our Waco ISD YouTube channel. Thank you. And we have a special presentation tonight for Blessed Are the Peacemakers Award recipients. Blessed Are the Peacemakers describe itself as a collaboration between a 501(c)(3) nonprofit's peace officers, faith faith organizations, and concerned citizens focusing on uniting America by building trust between citizens and law enforcement. Each year, the coalition recognizes people who contribute to this mission. This year, our very own trustee Jeremy Davis has been recognized by Blessed Are the Peacemakers with their 2021 Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. This award is administered by the President's Council on Service and Civic Participation and encourages citizens to live a life of service. Congratulations, trustee Davis.
Congratulations. Should we make you come and stand down in the middle? We don't, you don't have to. You both just stood close. Congratulations.
We also have Waco ISD Police Officer Darius Brown, who has been recognized by the group as one of their 2021 Community Peacemakers of the Year. The award celebrates individuals who seek to foster safety and growth within their communities. Congratulations, Officer Brown.
Officer Brown, let's stand near Mr. Bogus and begin to take photos. I think, is someone here taking photos?
And now, we are going to honor our outstanding community partner, Waco McLennan County Library. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes the community partner, making a difference for students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme for the 2021-2022 school year that We Are Waco ISD and acknowledges that it's not just the employees and students who make the Waco ISD community a great place to teach and learn. Waco McLennan County Library has worked together with Waco ISD to create the Waco ISD Library E-Card Program, which enables students to obtain library cards for quick access to their collection of eBooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines, and databases. The library also has opened their door to Waco ISD teachers to bring students to the library for special storytimes and tours. Library staff has also served as advisors to school administrators on updating school libraries. Children's librarians have conducted programs at various elementary schools throughout the years and participated in school events such as Career Day, Back-to-School Night, Family Reading Night, Open House, Health Fair, and many more. Library staff has also taught specific lessons to high school students such as how to use the library's databases. And we have a picture that we took whenever we gave them the award for community partner.
Thank you. Did our pledge leaders leave already? Did they leave? Oh, okay. Well, I usually like to recognize their parents and I was, yep, just discom... All right. Dr. Kim Cannon, superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening. I have a couple of items for you this evening. First, I want to talk a little bit about COVID vaccination clinics for children. As you know, throughout this school year, we've partnered with the Waco McLennan Public Health District to host vaccination clinics onsite at our schools and other district facilities. And so now, with the approval of the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine for children ages 5 to 11, we're expanding clinics to offer vaccinations for students in those age groups as well as continuing vaccinations for older students and adults, and booster shots for eligible adults. So one thing that we've heard, our Health Services Department has had some feedback that families and employees are concerned about getting a shot when they need to be at school the next day. And so in response to this, we've organized two clinics that will give kids and adults the opportunity to get vaccinations as they head into the Thanksgiving holidays. So tomorrow, there's a vaccination clinic at Lake Eyre Montessori from noon to 3:00 PM. On Monday, there's a vaccination clinic in the gymnasium at University High School from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And all three COVID-19 vaccines will be available at both clinics. Students under 18 must be accompanied by a parent or a guardian, and you can preregister for either clinic by visiting covidwaco.com and clicking on the blue button that says Vaccine Appointment or Walk-In. So we want everyone to have that information, covidwaco.com. Since this summer, more than 1,200 vaccinations have been administered at the clinics our Health Services team has helped to host, and they've been hosting at least one clinic pretty much every week and sometimes three or four. And they've also administered thousands of COVID-19 rapid tests and conducted contact tracing for hundreds of positive cases. It's been an enormous lift on top of everything else that our Health Services staff does, and we're just really grateful for them. All right. I do have a picture for the next item that I wanted to share, wanted to give you just a brief update. And I wish I could zoom into there. In that picture, you would see the students sitting in front of the teachers. So in this picture, we have a coach who's training teachers, who's teaching students, and we have our teachers observing. And this is an update on our model literacy classrooms. This was one of our big initiatives this year. We've been focused on developing model classrooms across the district at elementary and middle school to support effective literacy instruction. So we have instructional specialists and 34 elementary and middle school teachers across the district who were selected to receive, ah, there we go, to receive in-depth training and coaching on the components of effective literacy instruction. And these teachers are chosen to be models for their campuses. So we kicked off training in the summer for both elementary and middle, middle school cohort groups of teachers, and that has continued through the school year. So this picture is actually from today, was taken in one of our classrooms. Our teachers spent the morning observing a read aloud in a mini lesson on how to locate information in nonfiction text. They also saw how the students responded in writing using sentence stems and observed and discussed how to conduct effective reading conferences in the classroom. Then they, I believe they went over to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce this afternoon and debriefed the structure of the mini lesson and then connected that to our lesson planning template, and then from there, used what they learned to develop a lesson for their classroom. So this is a huge initiative for us. We're really excited about the work that's being done in curriculum and instruction and helping our teachers make those connections. And no better way to do it than to do it live with a coach, with kids, kids right there to teach. So it was really exciting. Questions about that? All right. I have some more pictures for you, this time about Thanksgiving, and they're just precious. It's been great for Waco ISD to once again host our Thanksgiving lunches. Between November the 9th, and I think we have a couple of, three slides there, Jerry, and we might recognize some people, I think. Between November 9th and yesterday, over 5,000 lunches were served to family members and guests at our campuses who joined a student for lunch. I want to thank our Director of Child Nutrition, Cliff Reese, Chef Julia Pennington, and all of our cafeteria managers and employees for their work to make this happen. Also want to thank our student athletes and coaches from University High and Waco High School who assisted with serving and cleaning. And then finally, I want to thank from University High School, Chef Oz and Chef Rourke and the culinary arts students who participated as well. It truly was a joy getting to have our families back on our campuses with our students, and it's been busy on those campuses with people coming in. And I thought there was a picture of Mr. Guillory in one of those slides. Not Mr. Guillory, Mr. Guillory's wife in Sweet Summer, his daughter. So they, they two participated and it was, I got to see them out on campus as well. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda. I think we have one question, Ms. Davis. Fund balance. And I'll turn it over to Mr. DePuy to ask.
Yes, but we start out with a fund balance. We closed the year at August 31st, and so we're... And then this year, it'll have a negative effect, but yes, it didn't get spent last year, so. But in the new fiscal year, it has a negative. Yes. This is food service. This is food service. So we've done all the ones for the general fund that we did in September, and then food service, we were kind of waiting to see on some stuff that came in to see exactly what to carry over and we're bringing that one.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Mr. DePuy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Coroway. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, passes unanimously. All right. Christine Holochek, review and discuss Waco ISD's Future Educators Academy Pilot Project. Exciting times.
Good evening. I had to figure out this clicker. I figured it out. Thank you, Jerry. I'm going to do a presentation about our Future Educators Academy. Donna McCaffin presented to you last year when we received the grant, and I kind of want to tell you where we've gone, where we have gone and where we're going. So we've established through our leadership team an essential intent for the program, and that's to grow, employ, and retain a diverse teacher workforce that supports student success. I was very excited tonight that so many of our young men that are part of the program came to be recognized tonight. That's one of the things that we were recruiting for is to have more men in the education and training program. So that's part of the diversity that we want to see in the program. So we have what I call the five W's of the Future Educators Academy. So anytime I do a presentation, I want to provide the who, the where, the what, the when, the why. And the who is only for Waco ISD, for University High School and Waco High School. This is a very similar program to Guaca and Guam in that half a day they'll spend at the Future Educators Academy and half a day they'll spend on their home campus. At Guaca and Guam, they invite in other districts to participate. This is a Waco ISD project only because we're growing teachers for our, our schools. So it is for Waco ISD. The what, the what is to, is to grow our program. It's to have students graduate from and to return to Waco ISD to be teachers. The when, the when is starting now. You met the pilot students. These are students who are currently ninth graders, and we have a few 10th graders that are part of the pilot project. So we are following them through their curricular pathway. Some of these students are already in accelerate and will be earning their associate degree upon graduation. We have a few students who are just taking the education and training classes at their home campuses, and we know for sure we'll get their education aid certification when they complete. And then we have students that we will encourage along the way to at least take one or more college courses, excuse me, courses while they're in high school. So we have three sort of different pathways the students can go on. The other when is next school year when we start our first cohort. The where, we are going to be housed at South Waco Elementary, and the reason that we're going to be on an elementary campus is we want these ninth graders to immediately start working with the children. We want them in the cafeteria. We want them in the halls, transitioning the kids back and forth to classes. We want to bring the opportunity for our high school students, or what this, what they call the... We want to bring the opportunity for our high school students, or what they call the tall people. So the children will go to their tall friends, and their tall friends will interact with them from the very beginning. They don't have to wait till their junior or senior years to interact on those elementary campuses. So that's why we're going to be housed at South Waco. And the why, the why is because we need teachers. We need teachers in this district, and we also need teachers in the whole heart of Texas region. On the demand occupation list, secondary and middle school and high school teachers are in great need throughout our region. They couldn't give a starting salary throughout the region because every school district pays differently. So we focus directly on Waco ISD and what we pay, and we are the highest paying district in the region. And we start our brand-new, fresh-out-of-college students making $50,000, a little over $50,000 a year. So for a student who can get their associate degree at 18, graduate from their bachelor's degree two years later, we're going to have 20 and 21-year-old teachers that are going to be trained by us, supported by us, and then hired back into our district. That's our plan. Some of the components of the project, we have to have what's called a summer bridge. That summer bridge is going to allow us to get our students to know each other, to do a lot of team building, some camaraderie building. We are also going to have work-based learning, so like I said, beginning their freshman year, they'll already be working in an elementary campus. We're going to have Seminar Fridays where we bring in guest lecturers to talk to the students about educational topics. We're going to ask folks like Dr. Kinkanen to come in and talk about her educational journey from the classroom to the superintendency. So we'll be asking for folks to share their journeys. We'll also be doing those work-based learning opportunities, and we'll do academic intervention. So if those students are struggling in any of their classes, they're at the Future Educators Academy or their home campus. We're going to do tutoring and making sure that they stay on track for graduation. CTSOs are career and technical student organizations. The CTSO that we work with is called TAFI, the Texas Association of Future Educators, and they will do those on their home campus. So we're working hand-in-hand with the home campus. On their home campus, they take the education and training pathway, which is principles of education, human growth, instructional practices, and practicum in education. So we work together as a team to make sure you get your academics at the Future Educators Academy, and then they follow the education and training pathway on their home campus. They also will earn an industry-based certification, the education aid one, upon graduation. And I'd like to introduce tonight Gabby. Would you wave to the group? Gabby Taylor was She's an amazing young lady. We have three others like her who graduated from the education and training program and earned their education aid certification and have interviewed and been hired and now teach or as parapros in Waco ISD. Gabby works over at the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Academy, and then we have three other folks, I have their names, they weren't able to come tonight. Eileen Luna is one of those, Lauren Guerrero, and Erica Galvan. All of them graduated from universities in their education and training program and now currently work in Waco ISD. Our course of study is, the plan is that they'll do a dual-credit crosswalk with McLennan Community College. McLennan Community College has a memorandum of understanding with Texas Tech and Tarleton, so these students will be able to go directly to college upon graduation right here in Waco. They'll be able to finish their last two years and get their bachelor's degrees and teaching certification. So again, that pathway is they get their diploma and their associate degree at the same time. They enroll and graduate from Texas Tech or Tarleton and earn that Texas teaching certification. And then through our teacher pipeline project with Waco ISD and our Human Resources Department, upon graduation, we're going to give them the intent to hire or actually preference in interviewing. We can't guarantee them all a job, but we want all of them to be interviewed, and of course, we do want to hire them all, but you know, we don't want to give a guarantee, but we definitely can give them a preference of interviewing. And so if you need any more information, please feel free to give me a call. I'm so excited about this program. I talk about it all the time, and I could talk way too much more, but I'll go ahead and open it for questions if you have any.
Dr. Holochek, thank you so much. It sounds like an incredible program. Question that I had was, I know that there's, MCC has the MOU with Texas State and Tarleton. Do we have resources in terms of kind of like project link where we kind of help them with the FASFA, kind of walk them their first year? What is that?
So yes, definitely through our Seminar Fridays when we do those educational topics, that's some of the topics that be covered. Actually, the Accelerate Program currently is partnering with MCC, and on their Fridays, they are doing all of that college-going information. One of the things that came up most recently is, I just got my transcript, but I don't know how to read it. What does this mean? And so MCC was able to sit down and talk to the students about what does their transcript mean? What does the English mean? What courses have you taken? And students just, they don't get to do that, and so we're going to build all of that right into the foundation of the Seminar Fridays.
Fantastic. Another question that I had was, you know, I know this is a new program, and it's really exciting in terms of kind of the grow-your-own, having our kids be able to basically get a degree two years out of high school. And it sounds like there's going to be a lot of support around them for that. I wonder if, as the program continues and grows, if we could track kind of the first-generation college students, so those students who maybe their families didn't go to college, but they might be the first in their family to go to college. That would just be something I think that's important for, maybe the, say for myself, to know.
Yes, we definitely, we have, you know, definitely looking at the demographics of all of the students, that is definitely one that is very important, that they are first gen, and there's a lot of scholarships associated with first gen as well. So we want to make sure that they know about all of the scholarships and the opportunities. MCC has a great program that is working directly with first-generation students, so we'll make sure that we connect all the dots. That's one of the components as well, is the social-emotional learning and how we can be all-inclusive with wraparound services, and so our plan is to do all of that with those students.
Thank you.
Mr. Guillory, do you have a question?
Yeah, I probably missed it, Dr. Holochek, but how do you identify the students? Is it through their education plan at the beginning? Or how do you identify?
So what we did with this pilot program is I went into the education and training classes, so they're already showed interest in being teachers. And I also went into the Accelerate dual-credit classes, so the students are already taking college credit while they're in high school. So I worked with all these ninth graders, and they self-identified that they wanted to be in the pilot program. The pilot program, they won't be going over to South Waco. They're going to continue through the regular high school program, and we're just going to follow them and give them supports along the way. So I've recently gone with all the other deans into all the eighth-grade classrooms, and we do presentations on the career academies. And so in those eighth-grade classrooms, I have 54 students who have self-identified that they want to be in the program next year. So all of the students are accepted into the program. We will ask all of them to take the TSIA exam, which is the entrance exam for college. If for some reason they don't score high enough on that, we'll do some academic intervention this summer in that summer bridge program to get their scores up. In their freshman year, we only require one college credit in the fall and one in the spring. So we feel that with intervention, we can get all those students at college level, and they'll be able to start those dual-credit classes in the fall. And we're still looking. I have 54, but my goal is 60. Dr. Kinkanen's goal was 100, and so anywhere in between 60 and 100, I think we'll be successful. So we do still have room. I actually had, while I was meeting with ninth graders this past week, we were doing their four-year plans through the rest of the next three years. I had three students self-identify and said, hey, I think I want to be in that pilot. So they weren't introduced tonight, but there will be three more added, so that brings our pilot up to 25. Very exciting.
Thanks, again.
So I'm excited about this program. I think it's going to be great. I have, is information being sent home to the parents of eighth graders so they can learn about the program?
So if a student self-identified to be in the program, I've asked the counselors as they're doing their four-year plan to have them fill out an online application. The information for the parents is provided on that online form. We have created a website for the Future Educators Academy, and that application is online as well. We will be doing parent nights at each of the middle schools, and I'll have a table set up with all of that information, and we'll talk to the students, the parents, about the opportunity to join that program. I'll say Ms. Pedrotti is here, and Ms. Pedrotti works for our district, and her daughter has already asked to join the program. I mean, so we already have folks from in the district bringing other, I hope you didn't mind me just sharing. So we'll have the opportunity for parents to know about us, and maybe we can get up to that 100, Dr. Kinkanen, after we start meeting with the middle schools.
And then I guess my next question would be, so the partnerships at MCC, will they start, you know, day one? So you know, when they do graduate from high school, they can just continue on with those supports?
Yes, they can continue on. They'll get their associate degree from MCC, and they'll have the opportunity to go to either Texas Tech or Tarleton. If they choose Tarleton, they'll be going the elementary route. If they go to Texas Tech, they'll be choosing the secondary route. So we'll talk to the students about all the different types of certifications to let them know which direction they want to go. They'll start making that decision around their junior and senior year.
So do we have kind of like a passing of the torch set up with MCC? So when they graduate and they're no longer Waco ISD students, they have those supports?
So yes, we will still support them throughout the program. The PTEC program is set up around six years. We want to see them get the associate in six years. Our goal is to actually have a bachelor's degree in six years. So we will definitely support them, not necessarily monetarily, but we will help them get any scholarships, fill out the FASFA, anything that they need to be successful. Now, they do not have to choose to go to Tech or Tarleton. If they want to go to Baylor, they definitely can go to Baylor as well. We don't have a formal partnership with them, but they are very interested in our students. We have a graduate from University High School who went to Baylor, and she has impressed the professor so much, they're like, how can we get involved in this project? So a student is not obligated to go to any particular college. If their parents are Aggies and they know they're going to be an Aggie, then we want them to go to A&amp;M. So we're going to support whatever their choices are.
Let me add to that that MCC and Tarleton and Texas Tech have been active participants in the planning of this project, and they're actually, we have representatives on our advisory committee for the PTEC Academy. It's actually one of the requirements by the Texas Education Agency as a part of the planning grant that we received. Also, they were a part of it from the very beginning. So when we did design thinking in December of 2019, they were at the table when we came up with the idea to start this PTEC Academy, and then we missed the deadline. The deadline to apply for the planning grant was November of 2019. We had our design thinking in December, so we had to wait almost a full year to apply. So, but they've been full partners in it. They've helped design all the course alignment and have been right beside us doing that, and we have been so grateful to them. They are just truly, they've been generous with their time and so knowledgeable. Londa Careview at MCC is just incredible in helping us make these courses work so that our students can just go right on over from high school.
Dr. Kinkanen put together the greatest leadership team. We have folks from all over that are supportive of the program. We have Region 12 on the committee. We also have Prosper Waco. So we have a lot of folks that are interested in this and are supporting it. So I thank her for putting together such a great leadership team that they gave me the direction, and all I've been able to do is just move forward. This planning year has been a lot, but that's what educates Texas and TEA. That's what they expect, and so I think we're going to do a fantastic job with this, and I mean, I have great hopes and expectations for this program, as Dr. Kinkanen does as well.
We need teachers. We need really good teachers. And what we heard from just listening to staff is that our teachers who are generally from here stay here, and teachers who aren't generally from here don't always tend to stay here, so we want to grow our own. You stayed. You're a good example of that.
I have another question. So are we being intentional about where the students are coming from, or at least tracking it as far as like what middle schools they're coming from?
Yes, so we have students from every single middle school that have opted into the program. I would say we have about 12 to 14 from most of the middle schools and two from Lake Air. And so that added up to our 54 that we have right now.
Great, great.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing more. All right, Ms. Benson, I think you're up. Review and discuss the Emergent Bilinguals Annual Evaluation. Time goes by so fast. It seems like we, yeah, doesn't seem like it's been a year. Clicker.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you tonight to provide a report on the academic achievement of our district's emergent bilingual students and our emergent bilingual programs. To begin, I would like to provide an overview of our district's programs. Our district currently offers ESL programs at all campuses and bilingual programming at 10 elementary campuses. We also offer dual-language programming, and I am so excited to share that we now have added a one-way dual-language program at Dean Highland. On Slide 9, you will find an overview of our demographics. Last year, we served approximately a total of 2,883 limited English proficient students. 655 students participated in the bilingual program and 2,228 participated in the ESL program. On Slide 12, you will see an overview of our staffing. We have been very fortunate to be able to recruit and retain our teachers during the time of the pandemic. Shown here is one of our new bilingual teachers, Ms. Maria Chapa. Ms. Chapa is very special because she worked as a bilingual paraprofessional in our district at West Avenue Elementary for many years prior to becoming a bilingual teacher. I always believed in her incredible potential. She exemplifies the benefits of not only being bilingual, but also biliterate. She is a very talented dual-language teacher at Dean Highland. She is a very talented dual-language teacher at Dean Highland. Before you, on Slide thirteen, you see, you will see the members of our English Learner's Department family. We have added additional staff at the high schools to support identified student needs. We are so happy to welcome Maria Mimi Martinez and Kate Hill. Mimi has supported students at Waco ISD for several years, and Kate is currently at Baylor University's Honors College, where he is pursuing a degree in Languages and Linguistics. Some of the members of our department family are here with us tonight, and I would like to briefly recognize them for the incredible academic linguistic and effective support that they have provided to our students and their families throughout the pandemic. Looking to stand? You can step forward? They would like to just step forward.
No, all the way.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Will you introduce everybody again? Because it's so small, we can't, I'll see, yeah.
We have Maria Martinez. We have Rebecca Rivera. We have Melissa Johnson. She is one of our English learner coordinators. And The Rock and everything of our department, whom we just cherish. Chris Leary, our administrative secretary. Moving on to Slide sixteen, we have had a very busy summer filled with professional development for our dual-language teachers that had also included the training and deepening of the knowledge of the Spanish language arts. We also have something exciting to share, and a highlight that occurred this summer was the Title III Symposium. Our department submitted a proposal for the symposium, and our proposal was accepted. Our presentation was ti-titled Higher Level Questioning Strategies for English Learners. We are honored to represent Waco ISD to help increase the knowledge base of best instructional practices for English learners across Texas. At this time, in the interest of time, I will move on to the achievement results for our emergent bilingual monitored students. I picked a special book to highlight for this part of the presentation. My Name is Jorge on Both Sides of the River, which was included in one of our professional development sessions last year. This beautiful book illustrates the hardships and the triumphs that our emergent bilinguals encounter as they learn a second language in a new country. Slide twenty-one begins our discussion of Tellpass and highlights the composite score. Tellpass, the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment for Emergent Bilinguals, is another state assessment that is included in the accountability calculations for campuses. Growth for emergent bilinguals is important to all of us in terms of achievement, but language proficiency growth is especially important in Domain Three if campuses have more than twenty-five emergent bilinguals. In order to meet the criteria for English language proficiency, thirty-six percent of emergent bilinguals at the campus must demonstrate growth. A student is considered having made growth and progress if the student advances by at least one score of the composite rating from the prior year to the current year, or the student's result is advanced high. Slide twenty-two shows the weights for each language domain. Know how, note how each language domain is weighed equally at twenty-five percent. Tellpass composite score is obtained by averaging the student's performance in the four assessed areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. A student can then obtain a Tellpass composite score ranging from one to four, with one representing the beginner level, two intermediate, three advanced, and four advanced high. Across the state, students really struggled in the listening and speaking portions of the Tellpass assessment. And because of the pandemic, Tellpass was significantly impacted because we need all four domains in order to provide a composite score. Therefore, Tellpass was not calculated into this year's calculations for accountability. I'm going to move on to highlight our students' performance on the STAR assessment because we feel that this is where we really get to see if our students are not only attaining the English language, but are also using it to learn information in the classroom. Despite of the pandemic, there are many celebrations to highlight in STAR performance for our emergent bilingual students. And I'm going to start on Slide thirty-two, if you're following along with the slides. A trend you will note across grade levels is that our students who reclassify or are exited from the program not only attain and retain the English language, but they go on to outperform their emergent bilingual peers across the state. This can be seen here for third graders in the area of reading. On Slide thirty-four, you will see the same trend as seen for fifth grade. Notice how our students, who have gone through our program, outperformed monitored students across the state in reading in all three categories of approaches, meets, and masters. Another example of this trend can be seen on Slide thirty-six with the seventh-grade results. In addition, current emergent bilingual students were just below the state in all categories, including masters. And this was despite of the pandemic. On Slide thirty-seven, I wanted to highlight how in an eighth grade, our current emergent bilingual students are just one percentage below the state in the masters category in reading. On Slide forty-six, you will see a summary of the science scores for fifth and eighth grade emergent bilinguals and monitored students. In fifth and eighth grade, current bilingual students were just below the state, while monitored students, again, outperformed their peers across the state in the approaches and meets categories. Slide forty-nine indicates and illustrates our area of growth. While there were many celebrations in our STAR data, on Slide forty-nine, you will see an area where we identified an area of need. Reading language arts is one of the most challenging disciplines for emergent bilinguals because it incorporates abstract discourse and academic lexicon from other areas. For example, nonfiction texts such as biographies can encompass linguistic lexicon from various disciplines such as science, social studies, and math. Fictional text proves to be just as challenging because it includes narrative and discourse that is more abstract in nature and often includes figurative language and idioms, which I can attest to as an English learner and immigrant, are very difficult for emergent bilinguals. My whole team is saying yes. They know. Science fiction is a perfect example. As a genre, it combines abstract discourse and academic lexicon. This can be seen in dystopian novels such as Brave New World by Aldous Huxley, which incorporates subplots of science and technology. So one way to look at it is our students are not only learning the social language and discourse, they're also learning the language of every discipline that they're in, whether it's science, or math, or biology. On Slide fifty, you will see the performance for Algebra One. Our current emergent bilingual students outperformed the state in Algebra One in the approaches category, and we're just at or below the state in all others. The same trend can be noted for our monitored students where they outperformed the state in the approaches category as well as in meets. The same trend can be seen in U.S. History on Slide fifty-one. We are so proud of our emergent bilingual students and our monitored students, especially because of their continued growth despite of the pandemic and all of the challenges that they have faced along with their families. And I've saved one of our biggest celebrations for last because I've talked to all of you about this, and you know how I feel about this. It's something that's very, I'm very passionate about. For the past five years, we have worked so hard to reduce the dropout rate of our English, our emergent bilingual students. The data is always a year behind since it is collected in the fall of the following year. As you can see, our dropout rate has decreased even during the pandemic. And is, was at eight point one percent, is at, and now at two point five percent. However, as a team, we want it at zero. Everyone that's here wants it at zero because each emergent bilingual deserves to graduate and go on to do great things just as their parents, like my parents, would have, would have wanted them to do when they made those incredible sacrifices they made. The rate this decrease has been a collective effort by every single person in our department, but especially teachers, counselors, our department's ESL strategists and interventions, and tutors, some of whom are here tonight. And I'm going to have them stand because they've worked with families and students and done everything possible. They're kind of shy, but. Rebecca Rivera, Maria Martinez, and Julie Peña have worked hours upon hours. And there's other team members that are not here with parents, families, and students to ensure our students stay in school. Randy James is not here tonight, but he has also worked many hours making home visits and working with students to get them back in school during the pandemic. And I'm just so grateful for our students. They're just, they're so dedicated to this.
Grace, will you talk a little bit more about the program at Dean Highland?
Yes, I'd love to. So, at Dean Highland, we currently have a one-way dual-language program. We are so excited because not only were we able to scale the program during the pandemic, we were able to hire dual-language teachers for this program. Maria Chapa that I spoke about earlier was one of the teachers that I knew as a paraprofessional when she worked with one of the bilingual teachers in our department. And it was just an honor to have her become one of those teachers. The program is a one-way dual-language program, which means that students who speak Spanish as a first language are learning content in both English and in Spanish. And so when they grant, when they go on to fifth grade, by the time they're in fifth grade, they will be completely bilinguine and know those concept, those content areas in both English and Spanish. And when they go on to high school, will be able to receive low credit, one other, one other low credit requirements for graduation for having, have been in the program.
Low is language, is a language credit.
You know what I've, I don't know, what I've always dreamed of having is English language, dual language that starts down in three K K to teach that. I, I don't know that we'll ever be able to do that, but it sure would be wonderful. I don't know how far away that would be or how impossible to be able to offer a one-way program. I don't know, it's not really one-way, but it's a dual-language program, but for English-speaking to learn.
We actually have a two-way dual-language program.
Where is that?
We have one at, we have one at Brook Avenue. We have a, we have a two-way dual-language program.
Is it just one class of?
Yes, it's in, it's, it's still in its pilot stage. We have students who are monolingual and speak English as their first language, and they're learning alongside with English learners, and they're learning the content, again, in both languages. So the students are, only speak English, are learning content in English and Spanish, and then the English learners are learning it in both. It's a wonderful program.
Yeah, I'd love to be able to scale that. To have the teachers. No, the teachers, right?
We had to certify teachers.
Is there a question over here? Mr. Vedanya?
Being bilingual myself and growing, you know, starting school, speaking Spanish. This is just an amazing program, and the reducing the dropout rate, that was one of my biggest concerns when I got here was seeing so many people who spoke Spanish would not finish school, and to see it drop like that. It's amazing what the work they're doing.
Thank you so much.
Mrs. Benson, thank you for this information. And I was also really excited when I saw Brook Avenue with the dual language. I thought, wow, I wonder if we could keep expanding that and scaling that. But I know there are supply chain limitations in terms of teachers. But the question that I had is kind of a little bit more into the nitty-gritty. I know that, you know, with STAR going online, is Tellpass completely online? Are they still doing kind of the, how do they administer that tech?
They, they moved now to do listening and speaking online, which is what has significantly impacted listening and speaking scores across the state. Our district, we purchased, we recently purchased Summit K-12 so that our students can really feel comfortable speaking into the microphone and feel comfortable, you know, with those types of questions because they're not wanting to project their voice. They're very embarrassed. As you know, you know, English learners go through a silent stage where they just don't want to use, you know, their, their voice. And they, they're, they know more than what you think because their receptive language is developing so quickly. But a lot of them are afraid to speak because of their accent. And so we're seeing that in Tellpass now that they've moved it from being holistic, where they used to be able to do that with their teacher, to now on a computer.
Yeah, that was my, that was my question when I was looking at the, at the scores. I thought, oh, I feel like they were, last that I heard that they were going to be moving that to online, which I think is really hard for.
We especially see it at the high school and the middle school level. You know, they, they really, the older they get, the more hesitant they are. And, you know, it's the same students who are, we're seeing such gains in STAR, where we know they have the language, but they're just so scared to speak into that microphone, which I understand.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I also am very impressed by the reduction of dropouts. Thank you so much to the team for really helping the kids and their families. I know that, that is huge, and I really, I would love to see them maybe get in the P-Tech High School and get their associates and come back as bilingual teachers. I think that would be phenomenal, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Grace, you are really, it's overall such a wonderful report, and every year showing progress, and just so thankful for you and your team. And you're going to make it so hard on yourself to, it's going to be hard to continue to improve when you drop those numbers so small. But, but thank you for all your hard work and dedication. It shows, and we appreciate you and your team.
Thank you to all of you for your support of our English learners and for everything you do for our English learners there, in our community, for our future. Thank you.
Okay, who is delivering announcements tonight? Mr. DeBir?
We have just a couple of brief announcements from the district. First, of course, tomorrow is an early release day for our students as we head into Thanksgiving break, and all of our campuses and offices are closed next week for the break. And then just want to reiterate the two clinics that Dr. Kinkanen pointed out during her report. We have a clinic tomorrow afternoon at Lake Eyre Montessori that's open to anyone, whether you're looking for your first dose, your second dose, you're a student, you're an adult, you need a booster, they've got it for you. And similarly, on Monday in the gymnasium at University High School, we have a clinic as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have one more announcement. I don't really, it's sad news, and I usually get emotional. It's sad, it is sad, and I, and so I'll just turn it over to you, Mr. DeBir.
So, I'm resigning from the board, effectively more or less immediately. My youngest graduated in June. I'd intended to resign then. But I have a lot of new board members coming on, and another resignation in, in the wings. And I thought it would be better if I stayed around for a bit. But it's been an educational ten years for me, hopefully for some kids too. I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to have served on this board. Also want to express my very sincere thanks for all of you folks that work in the district. for all of you folks that work in the district and do very difficult work under very difficult circumstances with flair and style. And I, I know it's tough work, and, but I've said this before, it's nothing more important going on every morning in this community than what goes on in your classrooms. And I know that most of the folks that are here are in support positions for that work. Very much appreciate what y'all do. You know, additionally on that note, I'm not going to mention any names, but I see a better, more qualified team in administration now than I've ever seen in my 10 years. And without, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but, you know, it's been an interesting parade of characters through some of these positions over the last 10 years, and I've never seen it better. Thank you, Dr. K. You didn't bring them all, some of them are here. But you didn't run them off, and I've seen that happen with, with previous superintendents as well. So, and you've definitely brought some very qualified people into some spots where we sorely needed help. And thanks, that's pretty much it. I will miss my fellow board members, all of you. Wish you all luck. Don't know where to find me? I can't imagine anybody asking me a question or looking for help, but... I'm, I'm here if you need me. So time for somebody else in the community to step up and take, take on this responsibility.
So the, the board will discuss next steps at our regular meeting in December. I don't know if you're going to be back then. Are you going to be back in December? I, I see not. Okay, so, so I will, I want to thank you. Well, and the chance that you do not return in December.
I've got one more board debate. Is there anybody from Gallagher here?
Oh, gosh. Well, might, maybe not so fast. Does any other member of the board wish to say anything while we have him? I don't care, no. Ms. Cordwick, do you have something? I see you with your button, yeah.
I, Carrie, I think probably the first six years ago, going on seven now, the first time I stepped on, well, even before that, when I was teaching in the district or associated with the district, or working to serve the district, I remember teaching 20 years ago, coming in as a first-year teacher, and all of the teachers knew everyone on the board. And they could name the people, and they could name, oh, yeah, they're reasonable, they're, you know. And I think every time I heard anything about you, it was very well-loved, respected, and that you came at situations open-minded and willing to always discuss or to listen. And I think when I first stepped on the board, that was definitely the case. You were always willing to listen to another side, another perspective, and... And you have brought a levity to very thrilling, amazing topics that we talk about. But just, you really have brought a levity and just a, a perspective that has been so appreciated by me on this board. And I feel like you have, you know, the trib wonderfully noted you as the voice of reason. I, I do think it is, you know, your, your voice, your voice carries. You have a lot of, I don't think I've ever seen you rushing into any decision hastily. You've always thought it out, you've always listened to every perspective. You really do kind of ask questions. And I think I've just, I've really appreciated you. I've appreciated your thoughtfulness, I've appreciated just you as a person just at board conference, at board conferences. And I just, you, you will definitely be missed. And I, but I do, I'm thankful that you'll get to focus in on your job or on your kids and, or whatever it is that you want to focus in on, and you'll have that extra time. There you go.
I want to say thank you as well. I have not gotten to serve with you, or I've served with you for the shortest amount of time, but I...
I regret it.
I do too, I do too. I am in the process of training and learning through what a large undertaking this position is. And your willingness to serve our community and to serve our community for so many years, it means a lot, and I really appreciate the service that you've given to our community.
I'd also like to just thank you for serving. And I told you before, I think you handed our daughters their diploma, so we will always have...
I have a couple of pictures of me somewhere?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to you, Mr. De Beere, for choosing me. For choosing me and you've supported me, and I'm grateful, appreciative, thank you. That's good, thank you.
You, you will be sorely missed. Fair enough. All right, well, with that, we are adjourned, yes ma'am?
I wanted to stand up before you adjourn. My name is Laquinda McGowan. I'm a former student, civilian, you know, mom, all that good stuff with Waco, McClinney County, 35 years, with young. I could get caught at 18, supposed to be back at Waco High. But just so you all will know, I've been kind of listening as a liaison from parent to teacher to student to activist in the community, and I don't like what I hear. Love y'all, love your energy. All y'all probably have parents, students, kids, coaches who y'all deal with every day, all day. However, we expect a little bit more than what we are hearing and seeing from the school board. And I don't really understand the deliberations that y'all are having right now as far as kudos and accolades. I understand for the public, you want to take the pictures, you want Facebook to look good, you need the media to ask, aspect of it to show the camaraderie and the team spirit. But as far as, I would say, in our culture, we call it a family SOP, which is a standard operating procedure for what you do when you leave this house. And when students and teachers are meeting in the house of these schools, it's almost like a chicken with their head cut off. It's confusion. And it doesn't seem like a collective mindset to me. And I'll say that with love, because Ms. Tankersley at Lake Armonasori does a great job. You know, Mr. McAdoo at Caesar Chavez does a great job. And Mr. Stewart, Coach Love, at these other schools and things like that, have done a great job. And just giving commemoration to the teachers who are giving their efforts and time and actually going into the realm of the unknown with the sickness that we can't kind of put our hands on. I want to speak to that because all of us, because I really feel like this meeting was a waste of my time, energy, and gas because I didn't learn what I thought I was going to learn from what the school board has been planning and what y'all have been doing to be more proactive for the kids. And I say that because I am a substitute teacher for WISD. I'll just speak candidly, I'm a substitute teacher for WISD. I was in a head-on collision in 2019 in front of Waco High, so I almost died in front of my alumni. I graduated in 2004 from Waco High School, and up under that tenure of the school board, I'm sure he was here, since he's been here. When you say you've been here for about 10 years, I'm not sure. But in the realm of being a student first and now coming into parenthood, my oldest daughter is 14, and my youngest daughter is six, and I have an 11-year-old son. So I'm speaking from a parent's perspective, but if I remove my kids, I'm speaking from a student's perspective. And the dual-credit program has been around for a long time. So it should not be a pilot program. It should already be an active program within WISD for every student across the board to get dual-credit. Every student. There shouldn't be a deliberation between Guaca, Avid, and the other programs that y'all are saying, y'all are proud of them and what the pilot program is bringing for reducing dropout rates and things like that. But it has always been that realm of, we're trying, we're trying, we're trying because all of us are thrown into the realm of the unknown as parents. And then as teachers, they're also thrown into the realm of unknown because they don't know what each one of these students' home life is like. And I say that because you do have to meet the students where they are with your energy. And another mom, she came up here and spoke about the energy that she felt like her student was given from the teacher to the policing staff for WISD. And the energy is, is not matched to what these kids are feeling like they're speaking to their aunt or their uncle. So it should be more of a family SOP aspect when you're talking about the education that we're instilling in these kids and how the teachers are delivering this message to these kids. Back in the day, I know WISD had some sort of media program where every classroom had a flat-screen TV or access to hearing the media that WISD wanted to present to everyone across the board in every school. So for my kids going from Lake Armonasori, which is a Montessori aspect, I get it, to South Waco Elementary, and then now to Caesar Chavez, and for the middle school principal at Caesar Chavez to tell me that my son is failing art because he didn't turn in an assignment on a digital device, and then I counter that question with, well, where's BCIS? Because these kids can't be expected to use digital devices if you're not implementing technology early. I'm talking about in middle school, technology needs to be implemented early for these kids. Stop expecting them to reach a higher elite or collegiate level in athleticism only to pass to play, and then you're not expecting it to pass to come back around and be a teacher or come back around and teach a trade. For instance, at Lake Armonasori...
Excuse me, out of fairness...
Go ahead.
Folks have three minutes to address the board, and I haven't been keeping time. But, but you've exceeded your time tonight.
So you're more worried about the time than hearing what I have to say to change it? Because you should be taking notes and bullet points on what a parent is requesting, not the time.
It's recorded.
And I sat and watched y'all laugh and joke and waste our time that had nothing to do with students, higher paid rates for teachers, and/or a realm where these teachers are getting some type of, you know, commemoration or reward for even giving their time and energy. Oh, I understand that. However, they were just allowed to laugh and joke and give him commemoration for him retiring, and it had nothing to do with our kids. Well, I get that, but this is my first school board meeting, excuse me, but I am speaking as far as a parent.
Could you, could you state your name?
My name is Laquinda McGowan.
Ms. McGowan, public comment, we have public comment at 6:00, and we had it again at 7:00 tonight. And we have a sign-up so, so that you can give information with your name and the subject matter of what you were going to speak on. And you're welcome to come back and do that again. But tonight, we, at the, are at the end of our agenda. At this time, the board will go into closed session under Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 55174. We will be returning, but I, I'm not sure when, and no action will be taken when we, when we return. The only action that will be taken when we return is simply to adjourn the meeting. And with that, the open session is now ended. Thank you.
The board is returning from closed session at 9:45. No action was taken, and at this time, we are adjourned. Good night.